Good evening. Welcome to the Town of Rutland Office of the Select Board virtual meeting, our first ever. I think a lot of us are using the word unprecedented and uncharted territory these days. This is it for us. This is the first virtual meeting for the Town of Rutland. We really appreciate that the Rutland Cable Commission was able to get this together for us and that T A Nicholson was able to set up the Zoom for all the members to be able to be part of it. And we welcome you to be part of it as well. It is Monday, March 23rd, 2020. It is about 6:04 and 36 seconds right now. I am calling this meeting officially to order. And I do have a rather long announcement to make because this is so unusual for us. So this is an announcement of open meeting recordings and it's different from our usual one. Meetings of the Select Board are recorded for transmission on Rutland Public Access Television and YouTube pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, G L Chapter 30A, Section 18, and the Governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Town of Rutland Select Board will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information in the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and/or parties with a right and/or requirement to attend this meeting can be found at Rutland's website at townofrutland.org. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to watch the meeting may do so in the following manner, by watching Rutland Community Television live on Channel 192 and on the town's website, townofrutland.org, or by viewing a recording of the meeting on the town's YouTube page following the meeting. No in-person attendance by members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so, despite best efforts, we will post on Rutland's website a video recording transcript or other comprehensive recording record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. I appreciate that. We will try not to read that for future meetings as we move forward. And certainly, we have other boards and commissions that will be operating the same manner as well for the foreseeable future. We're going to move right into as regular an agenda as we can. We have Treasury, Warrant, and Payroll. Can I get a motion to remotely sign?
This would be the warrant number 20. That was a misprint on the agenda. And the vote would have to be a roll call vote because we are remote participating. And the two options that the board have is can either approve for signing at a later date or authorize me to sign on behalf of the board with attaching a certified copy of the board's vote from the table.
Motion to approve and sign at a later date if that gets things down.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All right, so that's a roll call vote?
Recede aye.
Walker aye.
Waitman aye.
Stillings aye.
Aye. All right. We have one set of minutes. Did everybody have a chance to get through them?
Were they distributed?
Yeah, they were emailed out both last Friday and again today before the meeting.
Just in the effort to keep things moving, we obviously have a lot of serious business. We can certainly push these off to the next one unless somebody really wants to get these approved fast.
I mean, does anybody mind? I just don't, I don't think I either received them or I just haven't had a chance maybe.
I have not read them also.
Okay. All right. We're going to take no action on that. So for anybody watching, according to what we're going to try tonight, and this really is just an attempt, we're going to take, and we're obviously starting a little bit late. If you're looking at the agenda that was posted, it says public comment from 6:00 PM to 6:10. At this time, it's about 6:08. And we would be taking participatory questions by sending them to the email address listed on the agenda, which is rutlandmapubliccomment@gmail.com. So if there are any questions, Mike, that you've already received, certainly we'll take them and we'll keep this window open a little bit longer in case people have questions going on. I will also read, again, the agenda. For anybody watching, you obviously can access this agenda via the town's website. But just as a note, Town of Rutland's email messages are public records, except when they fall under one of the specific statutory exemptions. Any messages and documents attached to it are also considered public documents and can be requested by anyone at any time. Questions asked under public comment in an open meeting do not fall under any public records exemption, so confidential information should not be shared. And that's an important part here. Should you have any questions that you would not like shared during this open meeting, please contact Mike at the Town Administrator's Office at M Nicholson at townofrutland.org. It looks like technologically we are doing okay. If we are unable to take any questions, Mike, we're going to do our best effort to kind of move forward with that.
Sheila, can we, real quick, just, I think so folks know, it's still name and address in the email, right? I mean, the questions are not anonymous there.
Yes. Yep. All right. So again, public comment is open. We did start a little bit late. We are going to, I will allow questions to come in over the next several minutes, say, through the Town Administrator's update, and then we'll revisit it to see if we have any. So, Mike, onto you, lots to cover.
Yeah, so you see, the agenda was a lot more detailed this time because this is a virtual meeting. We had to put a lot more into it. So first thing under this is just updates on the current coronavirus pandemic that's currently happening in the Commonwealth. Governor Baker did issue a state of emergency earlier this month that has had other executive orders added onto it since then, with the latest being today at 11 o'clock. Today's order amended the previous order, so now the total number of people that can be together at one place at one time in an enclosed setting, not outside, is 10 people. So that's been reduced, it was originally 250, then dropped to 25, and it's now dropped to 10. On top of that, restaurants and anyone who's considered a food establishment, so a bar or any type of other eatery, is only allowed to serve for off-premise consumption. That is still allowed under the Governor's new order that he put in place today. And the other portion of that is the Governor has issued a stay-at-home advisory. Governor Baker made it clear in his press conference today that he felt he does not have the authority to order people to be locked in their own homes. And in fact, officials at the Department of Public Health are advising people to get fresh air when they can. So the order that was put in place now is solely for advisory purposes. If you don't have to go out, don't go out, but there are circumstances, circumcetances in which you have to leave the house, and those are still permitted. And with that order came a closure of all non-essential businesses. The Governor's office released a nine-page list of what is considered essential businesses. This includes government employees at the local, state, and federal level who are necessary for the operation and the continuation of government flow. We've already talked with our department heads to establish that protocol, and more information will be published on that in the town's website at a later time. We, other businesses that are included on that list are construction workers for any construction project, liquor stores, grocery stores, pharmacies. And for the complete list, residents can go to mass.gov/covid19, C O V I D, to get the remaining information at that. On the town side, the regulations that we have put into place, our town buildings are still closed to the general public. We will be in our offices periodically. We were there full-time up until the Governor issued his order this morning, and we will be adjusting our schedule to fit the intent of the Governor's order. And that will be posted on the website as well. But residents who are paying their bills can either pay online through our Unibank link on our website, or drop off their payment at the lockbox in front of the Community Hall Building at 250 Main Street. Permits can also be applied for online through our Viewpoint software. The Public Safety Department remains fully staffed, and in fact, our minimum staffing in our police department is jumping up to three. And Governor Baker issued another order that allows any public safety person, so a member of our police department even, to jump on the ambulance and drive to reduce the number of E N Ts that we have on call should we get a higher call volume. We have the staff that we can spread out. So we have made those adjustments there. Our public safety personnel, fire, police, dispatch, EMS, and the Commonwealth has also included D P W workers are to be considered full essential personnel and to report to duty as normal during this upcoming time. Our town playground, the equipment is closed to the public, however, our fields are still open. Again, D P H has suggested that when possible, people do go out and get fresh air. If you do go out to the field, though, however, it's clear that the intent of this is to limit interaction between people and not to use this as an excuse to have a pickup basketball game at the basketball court or a pickup touch football game down at Memorial Field. If you're going out, it's really for your own mental health, your own, just to get fresh air, not to cause you to have an interaction with 40 other people. We are continuing with our takeout challenge that my office started last week. We're requesting that residents go to at least seven of our 10 restaurants that we have in town and save the receipts of those. You have the option of either taking a picture of all seven, so long as we can see the names and the dates on the receipt, and emailing them to me, or you can drop them off at the box at the Public Safety Building, and we will go through those. Whoever does that will have their name entered into a raffle for a basket of gift certificates to all of the 10 restaurants that we have here in town, just a way to continue to help our local food establishments, since they may be struggling since they can't have on-premise consumption at this point. With that, I will say that public health officials have issued an advisory that takeout food is indeed safe to eat. What they are recommending is that you take the food out of its container that it comes packaged in and plate it regularly throughout the container and then wash your hands. The food is required to either be at a temperature where it will kill all the germs, bacteria, and the virus, and is also required to be prepared wearing gloves. So that said, the protections are there. The public health officials are saying that takeout food is indeed safe to eat. If there's any concern, it's on the packaging, so so long as you remove it from the packaging and plate it regularly, and avoid touching the outside of the packaging after that, you should be fine then. So there shouldn't be a concern about us having a takeout challenge when these regulations are going into place. There is a bill that was passed by the legislature today and is on the Governor's desk to allow for the postponement of elections for all cities and towns across the Commonwealth that are taking place between now and May 30. What this will do is it gives authority to either the local Board of Selectment or the Board of Registarians of Voters to, excuse me, vote to postpone a election to a date certain. So it can't just be indefinitely postponed. If it happens, it has to go to a particular date, has to be in a public meeting, and we're still waiting for any other clarification from the Secretary of State's office, should that be signed by the Governor, which we fully expected to be signed. What this would also do is extend the reasons that someone can vote absentee. Right now, if you vote absentee, you have to sign an affidavit that says you are either sick, not voting because of religious reasons, or a holiday that takes place on that day, or are going to be out of the town. This will also add our taking the necessary precautions due to the ongoing pandemic to that list of reasons you can absentee vote. And this will also allow another option of mailing voting for two weeks prior to the election taking place for all state and municipal elections for the remainder of the year. So rather than just absentee voting, any resident can request a ballot be mailed to them, and they can mail it back within that two-week period before the election. And those will be counted on Election Day as well. There is legislation pending regarding town meetings. This one should be taken out by the legislature sometime soon. But what this would do would allow the Select Board to vote to postpone a town meeting. The current process would be to call a town meeting and then have the moderator postpone to a date certain if there's inclement weather or a public safety concern. This adds a public health concern to that list if we go forward with posting the town meeting and leave it up to the moderator, or would allow the Select Board by majority vote to postpone a town meeting to a date certain. Again, we can't indefinitely postpone. If that were to happen, we'd have to say to this specific date at this specific time.
Mike, just a quick question on those two things. Is there, is there a cutoff date in terms of when that has to be postponed to? Is there a deadline, or how does that work?
Not to when it has to be postponed, but the window in which it can be postponed. So for instance, if the Select Board or the Board of Registars would like to postpone the election, they are not allowed to do that anytime after two weeks before the election. The vote to postpone can be done anytime prior to two weeks before the election, but once we hit that two-week mark, such a vote would be improper and be thrown out. Now, the question comes, what if we have all the ballots printed prior to that vote taking place two weeks prior, the Secretary of State's office and the bill do authorize that any ballot that were previously printed with the previous date are to be considered valid for whenever that election is moved to as well?
So if anybody wants to look up this language, it's S 2608, Act Grading Authority to Postpone 2020 Municipal Elections. According to the language right now, Mitch, I don't know if this was your exact question, but the date should be before June 30th, 2020. I would almost wonder if there would have to be additional legislation if some of this goes on longer than they're foreseeing and even past June, which of course gets us all past many of our fiscal year ends, is something that they'd have to reconsider. Mike, we probably should ask Anita to update her budget accordingly. If, for example, it's, it doesn't look as if, based on the bill, that it would be all mail-in or all absentee, just that those windows are wider.
Yes.
Yeah.
The one on mailing voting is not allowed. It can only fit the certain absentee requirements. This would allow it for anyone blanket to request it.
Yeah. And so what she budgets is really only for the active, live voting for this, so this is going to be a little bit of.
Yeah. I think it's important, I mean, I think too, in a community like ours where it's more rural in nature, I think when we talk about what we want to do with it, I think it's important to stress that we can probably set up our places of voting to accommodate the social distancing regulation set up by the CDC. But I think the extra time in the absentee provision would also allow us to make sure that those vulnerable or more vulnerable are able to participate fully without any restrictions. So I'm encouraged by that. I'm really hoping that, I don't know, we can, I'm hoping optimistically that this thing peaks and we have some clarity as to what the future's going to look like before that June 30th. But that's a good point, Sheila, about additional legislation perhaps being needed, so.
Yeah. So at this point, I think Mike clearly will have this on our next agenda, will be pros now that we've had one meeting under our belt, and we can have a discussion. As far as the legislation looks right now, it doesn't specifically state Board of Registars, but I think it came up, right, Mike, in the floor discussion?
It was amended, yes.
Yeah. And so we probably should have, again, next meeting, although, Mike, you know, if the Board feels it appropriate to start this process rolling and to reach out to the Board of Registars now, possibly to do a joint resolution in this case, joint meeting, joint vote, so that everybody's covered. Just because the Select Board can do it doesn't mean they have to. In our case, we could have both do it, or if the Board of Registars felt strongly that they wanted to do it alone.
I mean, we feel that, if we have plenty of time to really, we have up until two weeks prior to the election to postpone.
Yeah.
I think we need to rush that decision. Because again, things are shifting day to day, and I also, I would hate to think that, my hope, again, is that we can have, start having normal board meetings that include the public better than this format sooner rather than later. And I would really hate to think that we would be voting on something that would impact the entire town without any sort of town-wide participation other than email participation. I know that's wishful thinking, but it just, it's not proactive. It doesn't, it doesn't bode well for our democracy, and I think people would probably react poorly to that, and deservedly so.
So as far as regular meetings go, and obviously, these are not regular times, our meeting schedule looks like the 6th and then the 20th of April, and the 20th of April gets us right at that window. So that would be our last possible opportunity. So we could, excuse me, we could have a conversation at the next one, 6th, and then have the 20th be our sort of worst-case scenario. We have to make.
So who, I guess with the clarity, Mike, who is actually making the decision to postpone? Is it the Select Board or the Board of Registars or both combined?
The option is there for either.
Does that mean, but who makes the decision as to which board makes that decision?
Right now, the legislation said either board can make that decision.
Mitch, that's why I was saying, it would be nice for that to be a cooperative process, I think, in this case. And I don't, you know, I don't know if, I'm not sure if everything got necessarily really fleshed out as far as what that would look like in some of these really small towns like ours.
Well, what happened was, is there were some small towns that were saying, well, this election is for Select Board members, so should we really have elected officials voting to postpone their own election?
Yep.
So there was a line added that said, "for Board of Registars and Voters to take the political side out of it." But it's an "or." So it can be the Select Board or the Registars, and if either of them vote to do it, then the election is officially postponed and the act of the common law.
So if the Board of Registars votes not to postpone, and we vote to postpone, we're still postponing?
Correct. And I think that's one of the reasons.
That doesn't eliminate.
Why we.
That doesn't eliminate the, eliminate the political side of it?
No.
If we're still allowed to make that decision on our own?
I mean, I would throw out, I would, I guess, expect maybe is the right word, that anybody who is personally affected by the decision would, would not vote.
I will also guess that we see some type of report coming back before it's signed that kind of clarifies, because we aren't the only one saying this.
Yeah.
And this is something that brought up on this server and different things like that today when they were talking about this. I think the intent was there, and I think they just wanted to get something out, and I think there were.
Yeah, particularly when some people's meetings were coming up really fast, I think they had to get something on those.
Yeah. So just, I mean, is that then, because I'm still a little confused, well, I understand, and there needs to be some clarity there. So then, Sheila, you would expect that those who would be running for open seats would accuse themselves from the vote?
I would.
Stay or postpone?
That would make.
Eliminate the political side of the whole thing?
I absolutely would. I would, I mean, I, yeah. You know, and to your point, we have some time, things are changing hourly. We could talk about it again on the 6th as still a hypothetical. Hopefully, at that point, the Board of Registars will have been brought into the loop. And then on the 20th, if a decision has to be made, that's sort of our deadline for either us or the Board of Registars or both to make a decision.
Perhaps then, would it be a good idea when we have that broader discussion about it, to invite in both Anita and maybe perhaps the Board of Health to talk about, look, here are the pros and cons. If we stay with our current schedule, we need to come up with a plan to make sure that everybody's safe and socially distanced and that whole thing. I think that we need to broaden that conversation a little bit to include those folks if everyone thinks that's proactive.
Yeah, definitely. We'll make it look like a double Brady Bunch screen instead of a.
Oh, that'll be, yeah. Well, I'm hoping again that maybe at some point we can start having meetings again, depending on how this thing goes.
Yeah. Yep. Does anybody have any questions for Mike about any of the other items on his update?
There are some, just one more thing, that is another one, Bill pending vote of the legislature right now that would allow us to continue past the fiscal year if we aren't able to schedule our town meeting by June 30th. What this would do would allow us to spend on a 1/12 basis as if we were a school district. So we take last year's budget, divide that by 12, and that's our monthly spending money. That money comes from our free cash and the receipts that we do have coming in because people are paying their taxes. So that is the other option that's been filed, is with the approval of the Director of the Division of Local Services at the D O I, we can go into 1/12 if we are unable to schedule our town meeting by June 30th. I'm just going to go stick to the question in back.
So that'll be our next thing as well to add to the next agenda. So when we get into our next meeting on April the 13th, we will be right at the beginning of our final quarter of the fiscal year. And with everything going on, it's possible that we're going to see some estimated receipts change. Luckily, we've been very conservative in estimating our receipts every year. I think, Mike, you said Dan wasn't super concerned about that just yet, but for us to get a snapshot of where we are and where each of the departments is, particularly now where we are in a state of emergency, technically, they can deficit spend. Obviously, the areas where we're going to see that the most, most likely will be in payroll if some, if things change. So that's something we'll put on the next agenda.
Yeah.
Great.
In terms of personnel, the way that the order was put forth is anyone who we've asked not to come to work that isn't, that doesn't fall into certain categories, we are required to still pay as if they were working a full week. So for instance, that's a lot of our clerical admin staff for the work that they're doing that get their normal hourly rate. The only employees that we have that have been negatively affected by this are our state place workers who do our after-school programs. They have been furloughed for the time being until schools are open. However, under the new regulations proposed by the state, they, while they previously wouldn't have been eligible to apply for unemployment, they are eligible now as quote-unquote standby status, which is a new designation that's temporary during this pandemic. And we are allowed to put any unemployment payments that we put forth as part of our coronavirus spending that we can apply for reimbursement from later.
Mike, are all the departments coding their spending during this state of emergency?
Yeah, Dan's gone over that with all the departments.
Okay. Anybody else, questions for Mike? Okay, so the next thing under him is the R F I update for the marijuana license.
So we, our R F I group has met. If you'll notice, there isn't a vote on your agenda this evening. That's because I wanted to make sure we got at least one run with the digital Brady Bunch meetings here before we took any votes besides the one that needed to be taken, which was payroll and warrant payment, because I didn't want two board members freezing right before a vote took place and then not having a chance to vote in that. I wanted to test, make sure that was there. So the R F I working group did meet and does have their recommendation ready, and we will present that at the next meeting. Again, we had concerns that, particularly with this one, where the public is still not used to these types of meetings, and we wanted to make sure everyone had a strong enough connection with their Wi-Fi, video signals, and things like that, that everyone had a chance to vote. That we moved, requested that we move that to the next meeting, but we do have everything ready to go.
And we, Mike, through the chair, the issues like this, we're kind of in this weird situation right now, where obviously in a state of emergency, we have very limited public participation and avenues for folks to participate. And being that these businesses realistically during this state of emergency can't operate anyhow, is there any reason why we can't perhaps, again, this doesn't include this going on for six months, but any reason why we can't put this off a little bit? Because I know that there are members of the public that probably wanted to be part of this discussion. It might be a little bit easier for them if this isn't in this format. I'm not sure how imminent this vote needs to take place. Does anyone else have any thoughts on that?
The only reason I said move is just because that was when I told you guys I'd get it to you. If you want to put now.
Well, we had some guidance from K P's expert on how much time we could take relative to sort of, you know, I don't want to call it stringing these companies along, but, you know, taking our time with the process and ensuring that all of our Ts were crossed. Mitch, to your point, I totally get that. On the other hand, I would guess that whoever gets chosen is going to have construction ahead of them, which will be time-consuming, and if anything, they might see this as an opportunity to get a bit of a head start, if they are allowed to, on construction and design. So I'm torn. I totally see your point. You know, we have a pretty finite group of people who may be interested in speaking, and I'm not sure how to work that out in the, you know, in the. you know, in the circle of the Zoom meetings. Do we allow them to log into meeting? I don't know.
So what Public Fund did last week and what Murdoch will be doing this week, because Murdoch is actually having their school budget hearing via Zoom like we're having this meeting right now. Is um, there is a call in number that we could make public for people who'd like to call in. Um, what becomes a little bit of a hassle there is just members of the public who calling who like to speak. Um, it's hard to figure out one who's not talking over each other um and have the members of the public be recognized in order for them to speak.
Is there a way in which we can have an onsite meeting in our space and still maintain the social distancing requirements? I mean, we don't have to be sitting at that crescent shaped table next to each other. We could be in the room, but five, six, seven chairs or rows apart. Um.
It's an option. What limits us there is the governor's order that no more than ten people can be.
Yeah.
It's too dangerous. It's just not worth it.
I I, yeah.
Not worth it.
If we give people the opportunity to be a part of public comment through multiple means, one of which is, I know I would like to speak. Do we allow them a screen in Zoom? Because they have given us prior notice. So say the meeting gets posted, there's the agenda and people have the time in between the posting and the actual meeting to ask to participate? I I don't know.
It's just it's tough. It's tough because we're, you know, ostensibly we're, and I understand we're in that position because this could go on for months, but we're going to be making a decision.
Yeah.
On placing a business that sells a federally illegal substance in town without really any avenues or limited avenues of public participation on the issue. Um, and that's just something that, you know, I struggle with and I I'm not sure what K P's, I don't remember call what the timeline was. And I know that the R F P process has been pretty standard. A lot of these firms are used to going through uh this process. So I'm not sure how much time we have really to make that decision to be responsible. Uh, it's just I would hate to see this place without that robust public participation that I would hope that we would have on on something like this, but.
Mike, how many, how much space do you have? How much space do we have, do you think, to reach out to our applicants and ask them what their comfort level is and what type of timeline they're looking for in the face of of a national emergency?
I think we have something right for sure.
Okay.
Um, particularly when a lot of the responses we got when you said the initial deadline was wow, that's quick. Even when we still extended it out to me, that was some of the sponsors we got from um some of the applicants. So I think it should be okay.
Okay.
Um, but again, we have, um, it's not just the one retail two. There are a couple licenses that we are recommending, so.
Yeah.
If I can jump in, I think I think limited access by the public for public comment um is an issue. Um, I think that uh we should have robust um public comment for this type of issue. Well, no matter what the forum is.
Well, no matter what the forum, and it needs to be robust and it needs to be accessible. The question is if this goes on for a while, is this enough? Or or are we kind of putting a line in the sand and saying, nope, it's got to wait until it can be old school, be in person, be an open meeting publicly and and uh in person?
Well, ideally, open, open meeting uh face to face, but um is there a hurry? Is there a hurry to get this done?
Yeah.
So that's my question. I don't I don't think this this issue is not going anywhere. Um, and we are allowed a license or the town voted to allow for this, this type of establishment. I don't think this, I mean, obviously there's a hurry on behalf of the companies um that have applied or at least some sort of timeline there. But I mean, there's really, you know, there's nothing that that forces us to make a decision on this issue quickly or even, you know, at all at this point.
Uh, is everybody comfortable with checking in with the applicants? Not us, obviously, but the R F I team checking in with the applicants to um to see their feelings on it, you know, as we head towards what sounds like a a delay based on what we're looking at right now? I think that makes sense.
Go ahead.
No, I was just going to say I think that makes sense. Okay.
Yeah, it makes sense, but I I wouldn't want that to be a determining factor. Be nice to have that information, their thoughts, but.
Yeah, agreed, agreed.
Even into the reality too is that uh if you're starting up a business now, opening a new branch or business, it's going to take fifty percent longer than it would anyhow, because lending institutions are inundated with refi requests and different financing requests. You have um insurance regulations are trying to catch up with all of these these different adjustments. So I mean, realistically, their windows probably pushed back quite a bit as well because of this whole situation.
Yeah, I I'm I'm certainly fine with um with the way this is headed. I think what I will say is, and it's not just about this, but everything, the minute we get to a point where the town, the state, the country um is ready to get back to some semblance of normal, I think we're going to see a a very strong push to sort of go to bed, wake up and say, okay, we're ready to go now. And it's like it never happened and they're going to want us to move forward and hopefully we can be as prepared as we can for that.
Will have to be.
Well, also, I mean, I I understand that that that's the case too, but I mean, we're the ones holding the, you know, the commodity here and the license. I don't think that, I just think we have to make a decision that's right for the community with the community involved. I'm not, you know, that's my biggest concern, not what the company wants to do in terms of their timeline. I mean, this is our community, so.
Sheila, I noticed Peter Crane has a hand raised um on the screen. I don't know if that was on purpose or that was an accidental click.
That that was on purpose. I figured I'd be respectful for a change. Uh, I just want to let the board know that uh public hearings are becoming an issue for Concom. There are some that we are, that we have to hold within a statutory time limit of when of when a submission is given to us. We are planning very much to hold five public hearings on April seventh. Is that right, Tamika?
Yes, sir.
Uh, and uh, the only mechanism that we have are the phone dial in and Zoom. And so I'm going to open those to the public for their participation in the public hearing, because that's what we must provide to the public.
So.
We'll let you know on, we'll let you know next week how it turns out.
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, I guess. I guess the end of that is, we know what we would like to do. Hopefully it will be possible. And if not, yeah, we'll have to take another look.
Yeah, I will say too, have it opening Zoom up does not mean that that person will have access to every meeting going here on forward. Each meeting has its own individual I D and log of information that I um as the administrator, that are the account have to send out. So um, opening it up to the public for a public hearing doesn't mean that that person will now have a permanent spot on every select board meeting and every planning board meeting and every Concom hearing.
Yeah.
Um, from there on. I think Peter may have put his hand back up because I put it down and it's still there.
Uh.
My mistake.
Nope, I think he's good. Okay, uh. So, all right, so at this point, um, I'll let, I I can't imagine in the next two weeks that we're going to see a significant change. Um, the marijuana R F I update will be the same, which is delay uh because of the current situation. Is that fair?
Yes.
Yeah, I think, but also if Mike and the R F I team can just reach out to the applicants and give them kind of a heads up that this is the the thoughts of the select board and the the concerns and everything. Like, not, again, not necessarily taking their wants and opinions as gold, but just for consideration.
Yep, all right.
Yeah, again, the board has full authority to say, no, we disagree with you. We're going to go with someone else. Who's your next choice? Because just because we bring someone forth as a recommendation does not mean the board has to take it, because the board is the final voting authority on these types of things.
All right, uh, next, see.
Uh, the next thing on the agenda, the uh housing court ordered the town have ownership of the property at two fifty nine Main Street, uh previously owned by Mr. Piercy. Um, Becky is in the process of uh taking over the property, changing locks with the D P W, uh doing the sidewalks with the uh police department of the property as well, so that Mr. Piercy can remove these things. Uh, there is one person currently living in the house um that we are working with our legal counsel to take care of that situation there. Um, but the town has. Yeah.
So that you mean evict them, not take care of it if we're evicting them, right?
Yeah, yeah, I was just trying to use nicer words. Take care of the situation is what I said, not the uh person, but it would be an eviction yet. Uh, but this is one that we've had in uh town housing court for years. Um, and the owner had previously owed the town a substantial amount of money. So Becky's relieved to finally have that in the town's possession.
Those properties, Mike, were vacant for quite some time and I'd imagine that the renter was probably just put in there. I mean, in that situation where Mr. Poperski no longer owns the property, um, and that person had to put down first and last month's security deposit, where does that returning that money come from? Do we have to pay that?
No, we let them, we are statutorily required to let them stay for another month. And that is their last month.
Okay.
So basically, they were a tenant at will and they're getting thirty days notice.
Correct.
But I mean, but they're not a tenant at will. They're a tenant with an agreement under a prior owner. I'm just wondering if they do anything. What's that?
There was no written lease.
Oh, there was no written lease? Okay, yeah.
Yeah. All right, that's partly good news.
Um, and then. Yeah, Becky's been, if you look at the folder for this property on Becky's desk, it's probably just.
Yeah.
Um, just from when he has been in the car. Um, and then the last thing that's on the agenda for my update is just a reminder, we talked about this a little earlier, um, that uh we still have to, at least for now, continue going forward as if we are having town meeting at the regular scheduled of May ninth date. Um, and the warrant closes on Friday, April sixth at noon. Um, and any requesting warrant articles that to be sent to me, I might, the email address that is listed on the agenda as well. Um, until anything changes, that's the deadline that we are currently going with. I've received three warrant articles from my department head. Um, and they have been reminded about this process as well, and we will go from there.
Mike, I have a question. April sixth is actually a Monday.
Yeah.
Um, is it the third or the tenth?
The third, apologies. The sixth is your B O S meeting where you're going to play.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, so for anybody looking at the um at the posted agenda for tonight, obviously our regular town meeting is supposed to be in May. Um, and then, yeah, Leah's correction about the the day. Right. Uh. Correspondents, we have had a request from the fire brigade to renew the lease of the old fire station, um, which is in rehabilitation right now. Um.
Yeah.
We didn't receive the actual document, right? Were they looking for us to create it?
They did send an updated lease document, but we got it as correspondence and none of the board had seen it at that time.
Okay.
Uh, so put it on as an action item about the next meeting.
When does it actually, the current one actually expire?
June thirty.
June thirty, okay.
Uh, and how long was the last lease for, Mike?
I think it was three years.
Twenty-three year.
That sounds short.
I have to chill.
Yeah.
Yeah, that does, that's your usual municipal lease period. Um, or something like that. I'll have to look. We could have definitely done longer because we can do longer and we just did the Glenn Wood Fields for thirty years.
They did that literally twenty years.
Yeah, so I'll have to look.
Can you find out through the chair, um, what the minimum or what the maximum lease uh parameters could be for for an organization like that?
Sure, I can tell uh tell you right now what they're proposing, because I'm pulling the lease uh that they're proposing up on my screen as we speak. If it loads, I'd be happy to tell you. Um, I know we can do a ten year lease because it's real property. Um, I just want to see what they are suggesting. They're looking for twenty-five.
Twenty-five year, yeah.
Yeah.
Sounds more right, okay.
I'd support it. I mean, it's a steel firebrand. They they're pretty close to uh finishing the museum portion of that. A lot of work. A lot of work.
All right, um, so maybe any questions for Mike? Did we get any emails, Mike, at all from public comment? Just checking.
Uh, we did not.
We did not, okay. Um, so this went so well tonight. We're experts that we will try to come come back to um a more regular agenda at the next meeting, get some business done, things people have been asking for that obviously, you know, tonight wasn't the night. Um, before we adjourn, I just want to say, uh, you know, there's such a high level right now of stress and anxiety. And I I just want to say thank you to the community, obviously our employees who have stepped up in every way, shape and form I can think of. Um, and that's everybody across the board. They're they're such a team. I'm so so proud to work with those people, all these people. Um, but also our community members, um, so many of the people who live here in town are first responders in other communities or they're working in public health, they're working in hospitals, um, and we're we're seeing what you all are going through. Um, even then, just normal residents, everybody's out and about a little bit more and they're trying to do the right thing, trying to keep social distancing. I've been seeing multiple posts about people who are picking up trash inside of the road because they're walking in neighborhoods that they hadn't walked in before. And they're uh putting up signs and windows and they're checking on neighbors, uh particularly the elderly and anybody who is uh immunocompromised. And um just really, uh, thank you so much uh in the midst of all of this, that's really very terrible. And again, that terrible word, which is unprecedented, um, it's been really um heartening to see the community coming together. Uh, we hope you all stay well, stay safe, do the best you can. Um, we'll be here in two weeks.
Sheila, if I can just add on to that real quick, I do want to also echo what you said about thinking of the department heads. They've been great with quickly adapting to the situations that have been put in front of them. Um, but also, um, from Rich Steven, myself and just uh all the other department heads who I've been dealing with on a daily basis, we also just want to wish the best to the two rental residents who are are diagnosed with the um coronavirus. Uh, just, we understand it's hard to one be diagnosed with it, but also then to care about it every day on the news. So we just wanted to say uh we're wishing them the best as well, um, going forward.
Yeah.
Yeah, I also, I want to thank you, Mike. I know, um, we had that uh meeting at department heads a couple of weeks ago too. And it's just, it's really, it's good to have established kind of that responsible chain of command and making sure everybody adheres to it. Um, I know people can be panicked, including elected officials, and it's just, it's good to have everybody kind of working in the same same structure um to make sure that everything gets done the way that it should be, so.
Can I, can I butt in?
We have a great team, yeah.
There's button, um, our chiefs, D P W chief, the fire chief, the police chief, uh, really, really uh in that team, really standing up in in these times, uh, right in the front line there. Uh, the ambulance is is going nonstop and uh they are very vulnerable in uh times like this. True heroes. And uh, Mike, you are showing true leadership. Uh, you got ahead of this uh from the get go um with your 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 address through the channel one ninety-one cable. Well done on that. Putting the information out on that, having the uh the the agency head meeting today and uh just very impressed. And it it's it's nice that we're able to use these Google Chromebooks that we got in to facilitate this. And lastly, I just want to thank the uh Peter Crane and Paul Mattson and the I R C T V crew for facilitating this uh this venue. So at least we're able to show that we are, uh, nothing is shut down, that we are progressing forward uh together. We're doing this together, so um, thanks, everybody. It's uh, this is our finest hour.
And perhaps there's a chance that Gardner's elections get. And perhaps there's a chance that Gardner's elections get canceled and we get to keep Mike, but I'll just throw that out there.
All right.
There's somebody here to throw it out there.
There's a place to end.
Both can adjourn.
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor. All right, good night.
Aye.
Wait, man, aye.
Residiy aye.
Walker aye.
Goodbye. Good night all.